Welcome to Word of Mouth in Dartmouth. Today, we're covering Springtown Meeting. I'm Magnolia McComish, the Town's Communications Coordinator. Today, we're bringing in department heads and Boarding Committee members to hash out the Springtown Meeting articles one by one. Springtown Meeting is on June 4th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Dartmouth High School, located at 555 Bakersville Road. While only town meeting representatives can cast votes, anyone is welcome to join in person or online through Dartmouth Community Media livestream. We have 35 regular town meeting articles and three special town meeting articles to get through. So let's get started. Our first guest today is Community Preservation Committee Chairman Buddy Baker-Smith. Thanks for being here, Buddy.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm excited to be on. I think it's a good thing to be able to provide this kind of a summary for the town. So thank you.
Yeah, and what do you do on the Community Preservation Committee?
Well, I'm the chairperson for the committee. So do the kinds of things a chairperson would do. Set the agenda and make sure that kind of the business of the committee is going forward. But as you know, the committee itself is authorized in kind of to review and propose or recommend a town meeting articles for CPA fund commitments to projects and things like that. And so as a committee, we review proposals, make sure they're eligible according to the CPA statute, that they're viable projects that have the likelihood of success. And then we make that recommendation to town meeting. And town meeting is the body that then really has the responsibility of making the decision of whether to commit CPA funds. Afterwards, if the town were to approve funds for a project, the CPC's role is to then monitor the projects just to ensure that they get completed as originally intended.
All right, so like every town meeting, the CPC has money to allocate this year for projects. So let's get into it. Article 1 looks to be pretty straightforward. It is asking to appropriate $35,000 for administrative expenses from the 2025 Community Preservation Fund annual revenues. Now, where does that money come from and where does it go?
The CPA, the Community Preservation Act, allows for this Community Preservation Committee to set aside up to 5% of the anticipated revenue each year for administrative expenses. Our revenue comes from a surcharge on property tax that citizens in the town pay. And then there's a state match that comes from a fund that is derived out of filing fees, registry filing fees. There's an additional charge on filing fees that creates this fund in the state that then gets divided up. So we're allowed to set aside 5% for administrative expenses. We tend not to have to do that. So 35% really, $35,000 really represents about, I think, maybe about 3%, something like that. But we have administrative support for the committee's business that we pay for. We pay for legal services, might be reviewing projects we have questions about. It might be assistance with writing warrant articles, things like that. We have dues that we pay to the Community Preservation Coalition, which provides advocacy and technical assistance to community preservation committees. And then we are allowed to spend some administrative funds on things like surveys, studies that would inform the committee in potential projects as well as supporting the development of projects that would be eligible for CPA. So we've done some of those things in the past.
Sounds like a lot for the administrative budget.
Keeps us busy.
Good.
Yeah, it keeps us busy.
So Article 2 seems to be similar. It's asking for $330,000 from the 2025 Community Preservation Fund annual revenues for later appropriation.
That's right. The CPA requires that at least 10% of the projected revenue each year be set aside for one, for each of the three purposes: affordable housing, open space preservation, or historic preservation. So we must either commit to a project, minimally 10% of expected revenue, or set aside in reserve for that purpose. Our strategy in Dartmouth has been to just go ahead and set aside the minimum required in reserves for the June town meeting. And then going forward, we can draw upon those reserves if we have additional projects. But we know at least we've covered our minimum requirements. So this article, $110,000 for each, for historic housing and open space will cover our minimum requirements for the statute.
Article 3 is where the projects start, and it looks like you have a lot of exciting projects coming up.
We do. Many of them are plans and studies. And it's been very important for us to make sure that the CPA has tangible benefits for the town. And there's lots of examples of that in 20-plus years of the CPA. We have parks, we have preserved agricultural land, open space that people can enjoy by walking trails. We've developed affordable housing. So there's lots of examples of that. But it's also important to do good planning and invest in good planning because some of these projects going forward in the future really require the groundwork to think through what would be the best way to approach something, what are the possibilities that should be considered for a piece of land or a particular project.
The first is Dias Landing dinghy storage improvements, and it asks for $9,000 from the Community Preservation Act Unrestricted Fund. Can you tell me more about this project and who's paying for it?
Yeah, sure. I think people will notice if they come across the causeway and approach Ponagansett Park that you'll see along the right side a number of racks or structures that hold dinghies. The Waterways Commission has determined that there's a more improved design that is probably longer lasting and probably more efficient in storing dinghies and kayaks. And so the proposal here is to improve the dinghy storage with this better design and structure for dinghy and kayak storage. The request is for $9,000 from CPA funds, which represents a match that will then be used or applied to a Seaport Economic Council grant application in the amount that's, I think, estimated to be about 41,000, additional 41,000 that will be submitted in order to make improvements on all of those storage racks.
All right. Article 4 also has to do with the harbor. It asks for $10,000 from CPA Unrestricted Fund for harbor dredging, design, and permitting. This sounds like it might be one of those preliminary projects to get another going. Is this accurate?
Yeah, yeah, that's, you're exactly right. The harbor over time, as typical conditions in harbors, the silt builds up. And so the channel has become shallower over time. That then becomes limiting for, particularly for recreational boaters. So there are some size of boats that don't, can't make their way in to the harbor. And over time, that only becomes a greater problem as the silt continues to build up. So this is, the funding that's been requested is to survey the channel leading up to the bridge as well as on the other side of the bridge by the boat ramp and then up by Dias Landing to get an accurate reading on the depth, what the sediments are, impact of dredging on the natural habitat and the coast, coastal resources, things like that. In order to come up with a plan that will recommend a dredging strategy, how to mitigate impact, environmental impact of dredging, where to store, where to dispose of material as well as lay out a plan and budget for the permitting that would be required. And I think the goal is to have all of this worked out that would then set the town up for then proceeding with dredging the harbor in order to make it more accessible for recreational boaters in particular.
All right, and we're not done with the waterfront yet.
No.
Because Article 5 is asking for $15,000 for an Ponagansett Park and Dias Landing master plan. Can you tell me about what the benefit of a master plan is for an area like that?
You know, and that was a question that the committee asked Chris Vitale, the Assistant Town Administrator, who did a really good job of giving us kind of an overview. So we have a harbor management plan. The town has a master plan. The town has an open space and recreation plan. Those plans provide overarching goals and values that shape a lot of the planning and decisions that are made about what kinds of projects or how the town will develop in the future. But when you come to a specific site like Ponagansett Park and Dias Landing, there's a lot of things happening there. We have, you have a beach, you have playground, you have basketball courts, you have concession stands, you have boating, there's concerts, a lot of stuff happening on a pretty small piece of land. And so a master plan really is a plan that will provide a level of detail, more specific goals, objectives, and strategies and recommendations, really specific to that site about improvements and enhancement of recreational activities, facilities, as well as a really comprehensive approach of how to integrate all the uses that occur in that site. And so these bigger plans that we have really don't get to that level of detail that really are needed to really shape implementation of any particular kind of projects going forward. So this, the CPA funds are part of a match that will go with a current Seaport Economic Council funds that have been received to accomplish this.
It's great that those funds have already been received. Hopefully, town meeting votes for these funds so they can be matched and the plan can get underway.
Right, then they can go forward, yes.
And anyone looking to follow along with this plan can do so at EngagedDartmouth.org, our town's engagement portal where this project is posted and it's continuously updated. And after town meeting, I'm sure there'll be more updates and those can be seen on that site.
Right, and you can, I believe you can find the Housing Production Plan on that site as well. If people are interested in kind of these plans that kind of really look to the future because that's one of the articles as well, is to provide additional funding for the Housing Production Plan.
Yep, that's our sixth article, which is a great segue. So Article 6 is looking to allocate $25,000 from the Community Preservation Act Housing Fund. Can you tell me more about the plan and what the funding's for?
Communities are encouraged to have housing production plans that are consistent with Chapter 40B. And these plans are this proactive, it's a proactive plan for the development of affordable housing. It assesses the needs of the town, looks at demographics, and identifies the needs and gaps for affordable housing and sets some recommendations that would enhance the development of affordable housing in the town as well as some production goals. And when a town has a housing production plan that's approved and certified by the state, that's an important document that the state makes reference to, particularly in the 40B process. And so the town of Dartmouth has had a housing production plan. It expired in February 2024. So this, the funds that have been requested will update, and we will end up with a new five-year plan. And the town is also pursuing a technical assistance grant with SERPED, the Southeast Regional Planning and Development District. That would, if they receive the additional funds, a little bit less than $20,000, I think, additionally being requested, there could be additional community input and additional kind of depth of assessment that would, the town would be able to do. But the CPA funds alone would be enough to update the town plan so that would meet the requirements of 40B.
That sounds like it's going to have a great impact on the town, having this plan and having it available.
Oh, absolutely. You know, affordable housing, I don't think there's a community in Massachusetts that is not challenged by the high cost of housing. And young families, young people in particular, are basically being excluded from homeownership. It's much more difficult for a young family to find a home. We were talking with the Agricultural Commission in town not too long ago. Affordable housing is a real barrier to people trying to get into farming in the town of Dartmouth, and we want to preserve farming. A production plan like this, laying out some recommendations and goals, and then following through on them. It's going to be very important to the town, and it will benefit. It will benefit the children of the town. It'll benefit people who have grown up in Dartmouth but can't afford to live here, and so they live elsewhere. But if given the opportunity, they would love to come back.
Article 7 sounds pretty exciting to me. It's seeking $24,000 from the CPA Unrestricted Fund for Cornell Pond Trail Development. Can you tell me more about the site and the trail and what the plan is there?
Yeah, Cornell Pond's a popular spot in North Dartmouth. A nice, there's, I think you can picnic there. There's a nice pond. But there really aren't really well-developed trails that you can really access the property. There's a dam there and some spillways. It's a little tricky to get across them. So this, the funds that are being requested would be for the design and engineering for an ADA-accessible trail that would go from the parking lot at Cornell and make its way all the way up to the property line with the DNRT's Howland Reserve. Along the way, there'll be foot bridges that'll cross the spillways. And there's a couple of things that I think are important here. One is the trail development is just going to increase access for people to enjoy that property. It's pretty unique property with the dam and the pond. It's a popular place for folks. But the other is it provides accessibility. And that's really important. There are not, not a lot of opportunities for people with mobility challenges to be able to access nature. And this will be one of those. So the funds requested are for the design and engineering. The town intends to use, to also pursue a mass trails grant for additional funds that would be needed. Because it's ADA-accessible, because you have foot bridges that will cross the spillway and things like that, this is not a simple, just clear a trail sort of thing. It requires professional engineering and consultation and permitting because of the dam and things like that. So it requires a good upfront investment in order to be able to develop that trail in the future. But this will lay out the how to do it and the plan for it so that we can kind of move to the next step, which is actually to do it.
All right, so, so in this article, we can expect the funding to go towards the design and the engineering.
That's right.
And then I saw that the grant has already been submitted. We're waiting to hear back about the funds to build the trail. But it sounds very promising and a good opportunity for people with mobility issues or older residents to get out in nature.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Well, thank you so much for coming today, Buddy, and talking through these articles with me.
You're very welcome. I'm glad to have the opportunity. I appreciate it. I think it's really important for people to be informed about what's going on at town meeting, even if you aren't a town meeting member.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. The next couple of articles are a blend of Select Board and Finance issues, so we're going to take them a little out of order. We'll start with the Select Board articles, number 8, and then 11 and 12. Then we're going to switch gears to talk about finance. To talk about the Select Board articles, we have Town Administrator Sean McInnes.
Hi, Magnolia. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here. So Article 8 asks about $2,000 for the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund to be spent on cemetery purposes. Can you talk a little bit more about this article?
Sure, I can. So this is one of the articles we refer to as a housekeeping article. So every year, we have to allocate a certain amount of funding for cemetery purposes related to burial. So this is one of those articles, and it's here on an annual basis.
All right, it seems pretty straightforward. We're going to jump ahead a little bit to Article 11. It's on the bottom of page 8 in the warrant packet. It asks about collective bargaining between the town and the police brotherhood. Can you explain what's going on in this article?
Yes, so if we have a collective bargaining contract that we are in negotiations with in the fiscal year ends, we need to allocate the funding that we estimated we're going to allocate towards the collective bargaining contract. So with the police brotherhood contract, we went through two years where we were unable to come to agreement. Fortunately, we were able to come to agreement this year. So what we need to do is now, we've already allocated the money the past two town meetings, now we need to appropriate the money from the Collective Bargaining Stabilization Fund to fund the previous two years' settlement numbers with the police brotherhood. So this would cover 2023 and 2024 settlement for their contract.
So that explains why in the warrant, it's split between a couple of different years?
Yes.
All right. Article 12 also has to do with paying staff, the town clerk specifically. It looks like this article is looking to give her a 4.48% pay increase. Is this typical for town hall employees and how does it compare to other town clerks?
Yes, so this is typical. The town clerk position is considered a department head or a management position, because it is, even though it's elected. So as we do with all of our positions in town, we have a classification and compensation scale. With the Managers Union, we allocate the same sort of rationale with the clerk's salary. So the steel workers, which is the management union, they would get a cost of living increase as well as a step increase. And this is the same equivalent that goes to all managers as what we're allocating towards the clerk. And the clerk's salary is in line with our comparable communities that we use for all of our compensation and classification analysis.
All right, I know doing work with the elections, she's been a big help, so.
Sarah has done an amazing job as town clerk. She's, this year, she's going to do four elections. But on top of that, she's really implemented some innovative projects within the clerk's office, like this year, she's doing animal licenses online. She's done business certificates online, really making, she's really customer service focused, and she provides a lot of extra services to the community that haven't been done in the past. So she's done a phenomenal job.
That's awesome. Thanks so much for clearing up those articles, but don't go too far. We're going to have you back around Article 20 to go over some more.
All right, thank you.
Now to backtrack, we're going to look at Articles 9, 10, and then 13 through 20 with Town Finance Director Gary Carrero.
Thank you, Magnolia, for having me this afternoon to talk about the FY25 budget and the warrant articles. I'm excited to be here with you.
Great, I'm so glad to have you. We have lots to cover, so let's jump right in. Article 9 looks to establish maximum spending budget for revolving funds in fiscal year 2025. It looks like there are three revolving funds: the cemetery revolving fund, the recreation and park revolving fund, and the library revolving fund for lost or damaged items. Can you tell me about how these funds work and why they need to be established at town meeting?
So Article 9 is a boilerplate article, which we call, and we have this in the warrant every year. This allows these departments, for example, Recreation and Revolving Fund, $250,000. I'll give you an example, The Bucket, which is our restaurant down at the beach. They use this for purchasing items down there. So this sets the maximum limit that they're allowed to spend in every one of these items, including the library and cemetery.
Article 10 looks to be along the same lines, being another housekeeping item for capital planning. Can you tell us more about it?
So Article 10 is an important article in the fact that CIPC, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, meets every year, actually twice a year, once in the spring and once for the fall town meeting. And they talk about shorter-term items in the town that need to be funded. For example, police cruisers, items that are not long-term. We also have a long-term capital planning committee that was just established, which we have some articles in this town meeting to fund and establish. But what this does is, for example, DPW, they're rated an efficiency study. Also, the Dartmouth Public Schools were funded at $615,000 for items that they need. But these are more short-term items that are usually put on the Springtown meeting.
So this is something that they would need to repurchase every couple of years or every year even?
So for example, like police cruisers, they're on a rotating basis where they will replace a cruiser. So the article, not this, not this year, but in the, not this time, but in the fall, would look to replace police cruisers that are either old or have high mileage that we need to recirculate into the, into the police department.
Getting back on track, Article 13 on page 9 really gets into the thick of it. This is the article for the main town budget for fiscal year 2025, right?
That's correct. This year's budget is $103,653,491, the first time that the town's seen a budget over $100 million. And we look at, when we send out the budget message every, each and every year to the department heads, we look to have them stay within the guidelines of that message. And that includes a 2.5% to 3% increase in their budgets. So they were able to do that, including the schools this year. So we, we're prudent in looking at the budget. We still have some room to improve on that when we move forward with the FY26 budget. As costs increase, inflation's still at a high. We need to address these departments that are still requesting information, you know, more funds for the town. Having said that, you know, we, we're very, the department heads, when they, when they develop their budgets, are very prudent on how they spend their money. And we have turnbacks to the town somewhere in the tune of about $5 million each year, which we call free cash, that, that then gets used for the capital improvement that we just spoke about to fund those particular items.
So any money in a department that doesn't get used, gets turned back to free cash. And then that's what's going to fund for items like the police cruisers or school materials that they need to replenish on a rotating basis.
Correct, that is the main funding source for the capital improvement article you saw.
What stands out in this year's budget? What's different from last year? Is there anything to really like, that might catch town meeting members' eyes?
So as I mentioned, the cost of inflation, health insurance is at an all-time high and continues to grow within the budget, not only on the local level but also nationally and in the state's budget. We try to do as best we can. We're part of a collaborative called MYA that sets the rates for town employees. So this year's rate was between 10 and 12%. And that is probably the biggest item in the budget that we've seen this year continually to grow as inflationary costs for health and healthcare continues to increase throughout the budget.
The next six articles, Article 14 through 19, all seem pretty similar to each other, are they?
Yes, those, so we have different enterprise funds within in town: water, sewer, solid waste, DCTV, waterways. And what, these are user-based fees that establish these budgets. So for instance, if you are a resident in town that has a water and sewer hookup, you pay a water and sewer bill. Those rates fund these particular articles. So the revenues, we have to make sure that the revenues are enough to fund the operations on those, each individual. So they pretty much run the same on all those particular, particular departments.
So those are based on how much residents are paying into it, is how much they're going to need to ask for?
Correct, based on user fees.
And then, so DCTV would operate differently since there aren't users fees for DCTV?
So DCTV is run through agreements like with Comcast that supply the funding source for, for the operation of the program. They may sell small items, videos, videos and things like that. But their main operation is through, through funding of the licensing agreements.
Article 20 looks at pay raises for part-time and seasonal positions. Can you give a brief overview of the positions and tell me more about how the pay is determined for them?
So Article 20, this year, we, we put this article in to address any items that are for, as far as So Article Twenty, this year, we, we, we put this article in to address any items that are for, as far as like positions that we can't, we can't get, you know, people to to actually work on those positions. So, you know, people are looking for a higher rate, so we have to address that through this article. This year, the beach raker, we're looking at $50 an hour. What we used, if you remember back, I think a year ago, we talked about snowplow drivers. We couldn't get snowplow drivers, we had to raise that. So the $50 an hour, we thought was favorable to to attract someone to do this. And there would be a sheen operator that used equipment to remove debris from the beach. And like I said, it was, it was raised to $50 an hour. The Assistant Recreation Director at $19 an hour, they're, they're helping with the summer programs, supervise children for that department. So we need to continually adjust these if we find that we can't fill those positions.
Yeah, and I spoke to Parks and Rec about that assistant position, and that's really a lot of their seasonal part time employees. It's not someone that's going to be a full time all year employee, that's someone that's just working these like camps type programs.
Yep.
Well, that does it for our finance related articles. Thank you, Gary, for coming in today.
Thanks for having me.
To talk about these, these important issues and funding the town in the coming year, and look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Thanks a lot for having me.
Of course. We're going to jump ahead one last time to invite Dartmouth's Director of Planning, Christina Grady, to talk about Article Twenty-three on page fifteen in the warrant. Thank you so much for being here, Christine.
Thank you for having me. Hello, everyone. I am Christina Grady, the Planning Director, and I am here on behalf of the Planning Board to present an overview of the Planning Board-sponsored warrant article for town meeting.
So tell me what this bylaw change is proposing.
The proposed bylaw will create an entirely new zoning bylaw referred to as Section 375, Article 50, accessory dwelling units. These accessory dwelling units are also called ADUs, and they are independent living spaces that homeowners can build on their property in addition to their primary residence. In the case of this proposed bylaw, the ADUs are attached to the main structure. Of course, there are a few preexisting conditions that allow for detached units, but those stipulations are clearly explained within the bylaw. In the cases of all of the ADUs as proposed, they are subordinate to the primary structure and on the same lot as the existing residence. The existing accessory apartment wording throughout the current bylaw is over 30 years old and does not serve the multi generational needs of today's residents. This ADU bylaw will allow as of right units in the single residence A, B, C, and general residence zoning districts. The proposed bylaw will allow for 1,000 square feet of habitable gross floor area and a maximum of two bedrooms. No special permits will be required for the ADUs, and all other zoning requirements within the underlying district shall apply.
So Christine, who is this change expected to impact?
The families of Dartmouth. The Planning Board was particularly interested in creating a zoning bylaw that would address the needs of the senior population in Dartmouth while also being cognizant of the challenges facing the young adults of town who are trying to make the next step towards independence. The 1,000 square foot size allowance was chosen to account for medical equipment, which may be needed in some circumstances. The two bedroom maximum was decided on as a way to allow for around the clock caregiving while limiting how many people can reside within the ADU.
So that being said, does this change have anything to do with short term rentals like Airbnbs?
I know that this is of concern to some individuals in town, but I am here to say that this bylaw is not for short term rentals. A short term rental is typically defined as a rental of a residential home or unit or accessory structure for a short period of time, typically less than 30 days. This bylaw supports full time residents in town.
So nothing to do with short term rentals like Airbnb's?
Absolutely nothing to do with that.
So are there any other communities that are creating bylaws like this or that may already have them?
There are a number of other communities that already have accessory dwelling unit articles in their zoning bylaws. Most communities have done this over the past number of years. Dartmouth is doing it now because we did initially have something for accessory apartments, but this serves a much different need.
All right, so we are not reinventing the wheel with this?
We are not reinventing the wheel. We are doing this for the residents of Dartmouth.
All right. Is there anything else you wanted to add about this article?
Yes, the Planning Board would like everyone to know that the intent of creating this bylaw is to take care of the needs of residents of Dartmouth and their families. Important facts to keep in mind when you vote, 25, 20% of the population here is over the age of 65. And of that, 900 people are over the age of 90, so there's definitely a need. The creation of this bylaw also works to to address many of the goals in the master plan. They come from sections such as services and facilities, housing, and land use goals. The Planning Board warrant article contains the proposed Article 50 ADU in its entirety and the information regarding changes to other existing residential articles that support the ADU bylaw. The Planning Board handout materials in your packet include the red line text for each of the existing residential districts. The complete bylaws are available online, by the way. The packet also contains the complete version of Article Five, which is the use table and definitions from the fall town meeting, as well as the recommendation letter to the select board and a cover flyer explaining the highlights of this proposed bylaw.
Definitely. So that cover letter is going to answer a lot of the questions we had today, just maybe a little bit more detail, or if our town meeting members prefer to read it out, they'll have it there at town meeting. I also want to point out that this packet is a packet within the packet, so it should be very easy for our town meeting members to find in there, and it's all grouped together, and it's pretty easy to follow, so.
Yes, it follows the same structure that we normally do. We've just basically added the red line things, which we have not done in the past, and the cover, the cover letter flyer piece of it.
Yeah, that'll be great for our town meeting members to be able to look through exactly what's changing and what, if they're, if they're interested verbatim, what this bylaw is proposing, so.
I hope so.
Thanks for putting that together, and thank you so much for coming on today.
Okay, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present on behalf of the Planning Board, and I will see everybody at town meeting.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like Articles Twenty-one and Twenty-two go together, and we have Mr. McGinnis back to discuss these. So it seems that Article Twenty-one creates an account for long term capital stabilization fund, and then Article Two puts $1 million into the account, and that money comes from the surplus revenue fund.
So a little background on this. So this past year, the Select Board created a long term capital stabilization committee, which is members of the Select Board, Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, myself, Finance Director, and Assistant Town Administrator, and you, you're on that committee as well, to really take a long term look at some of the large capital needs the town has in place over the next 50 years. I think as we presented that in the spring, we've shown that there's a lot of capital projects the school needs between schools and buildings and infrastructure improvements. But we also were able to show that over the long term, it's affordable for the community. So that was a great exercise. I think we did a good job overall of showing what the needs are and how we can achieve those needs. So in order to back that up, we decided to create a long term capital stabilization fund that would help to either offset borrowing costs, offset capital costs for these large projects that we have coming down the pike in the next, you know, 50 years. So Article Twenty-one establishes that capital stabilization fund, and then Article Twenty-two appropriates money to that capital stabilization fund to be used. So that's $1 million that we want to allocate to that fund this year, and it is not an annual allocation, so next year it could be no money. It could be $2 million, so it's really up to town meeting and the Select Board to decide what they want to allocate to the fund moving forward. So a great step in the direction, taking a long term look at Dartmouth and its capital needs. So these are two great articles.
What sets this funding apart from regular capital funding?
Routine capital is for, there's certain criteria that routine capital covers, and I think you may have had our Finance Director Gary Carrero in here to talk about routine capital. And it's generally projects that are funded that are going to last more than five years, but they're generally on the the lower end of the funding scale, like the long term capital is for large projects where we would be borrowing. Routine capital, we do not borrow for generally.
Article Twenty-four on page nineteen of the warrant has to do with making amendments to wetland bylaw provisions. I know this comes from conservation, but while you're here, could you explain what this article wants to do and what the changes are?
Uh, yes, this is more of a housekeeping article for conservation. It, it clarifies and defines some terms that are, have been in the bylaw but have not had a real definition behind it, and it simplifies some of the language. So it's really pretty straightforward. It's just to kind of make the bylaw a little easier to understand for the public.
All right. Now to get into an article that's had a lot of talk around it, Article Twenty-five looks to the authorization, to authorize the Select Board to sell the old police station building and the land it's on. However, the land is currently part of a larger town owned lot. Can you explain what a sale would even look like?
It's not clear what a sale would look like exactly because of the shape of the lot and the other parcels that the town owns adjacent to the lot, and also the other properties, like this building we're in, the DCTV, DCTV building is on the lot currently, and we have an antenna that that would need to stay. So it would be up to the Select Board to decide how to subdivide the lot, if at all, and sell the property.
Who's going to determine the price of this potential sale?
We've hired an appraisal firm to do an appraisal of the property and to look at uses and give appraisal prices on those properties. So we anticipate that appraisal to be complete by the end of this month, May, and we'll know what their appraised value of the property is for different options.
All right, and I see that this article did not get great recommendations from the Finance Committee, but the Select Board voted unanimously in support of it. Can you explain why there's such mixed emotions on this issue?
Well, as you know, the old police station building has been vacant for over a decade. There, you know, back when they had the issue with the building, they did a study in 2015 to look at uses of the building. They presented some uses at town meeting. They were voted down, so the town meeting did not want to reutilize the building. So it sat dormant. In 2018 or 19, town meeting funded money for the demolition of the building. So this past year, or a year and a half ago, it was brought forward to demolish the building. A bid went out. We had a bid in place. It had to go to historic, the Historic Commission thought there was value in the building, so they've been advocating for the building. So the Select Board decided to look at the value of the building to see if it can be sold. So this is why we're at where we are now.
All right. Is there anything else you want to add about the police building?
Other than that, no, it's really, you know, it's up to the Select Board and town meeting to decide the use of the building. You know, there's a current design of a recreation center that would go on the larger site, not where the this, the building currently sits, but it's, you know, the uses for the building, it'll be difficult to determine because of the shape of the lot, and the town actually approved the purchase of an adjacent lot in order to create a larger parcel that can access the other town owned land in the back of the entire parcel, so. A lot of potential for the property, so we'll see what town meeting decides.
Article Twenty-six is asking town meeting members to vote on acquiring Pasca Mansit River Aqua for Land. In this article, there are multiple spots where money is being requested. Can you explain why?
Yes, so this is a funding that's been in place for a few years now. Originally, the town received a grant from the state for the purchase of the property. There was not enough money. I think the overall purchase price is $815,000. Also, the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, allocated some funding for the purchase of the property. And also, the town has partnered with the Buzzards Bay Coalition to purchase the property. So those three entities are going to collaborate to purchase the property for the protection of the town's drinking water, but also with Buzzards Bay's support to maintain open space. So it's a lot of different entities contributing, but the overall impact of the community is great in that it protects the town's drinking water, but also provides some usable open space.
Article Twenty-seven is a citizen's petition for Farm and Coast Market to receive an all alcohol beverage license. What do we need to know about this article?
The town has limited retail sale licenses, liquor stores is a good example, for beer and wine and also all alcohol. The town has maximized those licenses. We do not have any more to distribute. Farm and Coast would like, they currently have a beer and wine license. They would like to make that an all alcohol license. In order to do that, they would need town meeting approval, and also it would have to be a special act with the state legislature if town meeting were to approve it. So this is the first step in the process. Once approved, then the Select Board can, as, will have one more full alcohol license for retail to distribute, if it all goes smoothly.
All right. That's all the questions I have for you on the regular town meeting warrant, but I'll see you again for the special town meeting warrant, and then we'll wrap it up after that.
All right, thank you.
Just eight charter amendment articles, and then we have covered the full town meeting warrant. To talk about these, we have Heidi Silva Brooks, Chairwoman of the Charter Review Committee, and Bess Coughlin, a member of the Charter Review Committee appointed by the School Committee. Thank you both so much for being here. Could you tell me a little bit about the Charter Review Committee and what each of your roles are?
Certainly. So the Charter Review Committee started four years ago in 2020. The charter is reviewed every 10 years, and so in 2020, we started the process, and we kind of stalled along with with COVID. At the time, I was a retired member of the School Department, and I became the School Department's representative to the charter. Ironically, that is what Bess is as well. So the two of us are here from the School Department appointments. After being on the charter, I then chose to run for Select Board, so although I'm on the Select Board, I'm not a representative from the Select Board to charter. That's Sean McDonald, so he's on our committee. Our committee has had some turnover in four years due to health issues and availability of certain members. So it has evolved, and so we are a nine member appointed board, and we look at the charter. And our real gauge was to look at what the charter says and how the town runs. How the town runs, making sure that it is in alignment with the charter or that the charter speaks to how the job is actually done. And so that's what we reviewed.
I don't have a lot to add, but I came in only in November of last year due to some absences. And really, my understanding of what we do is making sure we bring the charter up to date in terms of making sure that the charter reflects current state law and federal law. And we also make, make sure any language is updated that needs to be updated, and that we make sure that the town, the charter works for the most efficient town actions, so efficiency and evenness across the departments.
Absolutely. So it's clear that the Charter Review Committee is coming at this with what the best intentions of the town are.
We have representatives from the School Department, as I said, Select Board, Planning Board, Finance Committee, and then Town Moderator appoints and Select Board appoints kind of at large members. So we have a nice mix of lenses that people are looking at.
Awesome. I also want to mention that for these articles, even if town members vote to pass the articles, there will be no update to the charter until residents vote at the next April election, at the annual election, so.
It's, it's quite a process. So we're sending it forth, we, the Charter Committee, sent it forth to the Select Board to review it, to put it on the warrant, and now it's on the warrant for town meeting members. That's April, that's June 2024. It would then go on the April 2025 election, and depending on the charter amendment, it would either take take effect immediately, July 1st of 2025, or over the course of the next round of elections, which could be as late as April 2026.
So it's important to remember that town meeting members are not deciding, they're just deciding to send it to the ballot. So we have a lot of articles to get through.
We do.
And the first one is the omnibus correction. Can one of you explain what an omnibus correction is?
I will attempt. The omnibus correction article, we will be providing all town meeting members with the entire charter document. And the omnibus corrections will be highlighted in gray, bold, stricken out. It really is not to change the meaning of the charter. It doesn't change the workings of the charter. It just simply brings everything up to 2024 language usage. We had a lot of things that were lowercase when they should have been uppercase. We had outdated. We had outdated language. For example, we only talked about putting agendas up, like on a bulletin board, you know, with a peg at the town clerk's office. And now so many things are done electronically. We wanted the 2020 corrections to mirror that advancement in technology.
All right. So we're just going to emphasize that these are not corrections to what these charter items mean. It's just grammatical.
Grammatical syntax, yeah.
It's housekeeping.
House, yeah. Which still needs to go before the Town Meeting members and the Town voters.
Absolutely. And Town Meeting members can see all of the changes within their packet?
Yes, it'll be Schedule B.
Awesome. That seems pretty straightforward. Articles 29 and 30 want to change the Board of Health and the Board of Assessors to positions that are appointed by the Select Board. Can you explain the thought process the committee had for this?
Sure. So in those boards, some people who have the qualifications don't necessarily want to run a political campaign. They're busy with their jobs, whatnot. To expand the pool of candidates, we feel that not making, running for the position would expand the pool. And we would get, we have qualified candidates now, but we would have more qualified candidates to choose from and make a stronger town government.
And have you heard from these boards and committees that that's something they want to see also?
I, over the course of the last four years, have had conversations with either the Director of those boards or board members. And like everything else, sometimes those conversations are, this is a great idea. Other times, it's, we like the current makeup of our board. Right now, we're not, we're not in need of other candidates. But ultimately, the decision of the charter was, we know of folks who are in, have experience in either that assessor realm or the Board of Health realm, who have no interest of campaigning or, and as Bess said, we want a strong pool of candidates and we want those boards to be strong and effective. And we think that by, through appointment, we may have that.
So Article 31 would change the hiring and compensation of the Director of Public Works from the Board of Public Works to the Select Board. I've heard some pushback on this from the DPW Board at Select Board meetings. Can you explain why the Charter Review Committee feels that this is in the best interest of the town?
I absolutely can. This is just one area and it's the only area that the charter identifies. The charter identifies only the position of Director of the Department of Public Works. It outlines the role of the Director as far as like what they oversee. And the Board of Public Works really manages the day-to-day operations in a consultant way to the Director. That would not change. But right now, the Board of Public Works is an appointed board, which makes sense again because we get the people who know the job well. Right now, we have people who have been in their former lives, either a Director of Public Works or in that realm of engineering, of designing public works and water and sewer departments. So we have a great board. The one issue is it's an appointed board. And right now, it's the only appointed board in the town that selects the candidate and affixes the compensation. Going forth, it is something that I can state here, that the Board of Selectmen, now is a member of the Board, I can say that it will be done cooperatively. We will certainly have discussions with the Board of Public Works. However, when it comes time to make the official appointment and affix the compensation, it will be the task of the Board, the Select Board. Because every other person is appointed that way through the Board. And ultimately, it's the Select Board that has the final impact on the town's budget. And it shouldn't be a three-member-appointed board.
So from what you're saying, I'm hearing that it's really a matter of consistency amongst all appointed boards and to make sure that the budget is managed by the Select Board and isn't a responsibility of other appointed boards.
Right. It brings it, it aligns it with all the other appointed boards.
All right. So from reading the warrant, I think it makes sense to group Article 32 and 35 together since they both deal with adjusting board sizes. Article 32 looks at changing the Historical Commission's membership from nine members to seven. And Article 35 changes the Library Trustees from six to five members. Can you explain what's going on here a bit?
Sure. So for the Historical Commission, they actually requested that the size be reduced. Currently, it's nine. We could take it down to eight, but that would leave an even number. And all other boards, well, not yet, but most other boards are odd numbers. And that is really beneficial when taking a vote. You don't get a tie. So we are going from nine to seven because the historical group wants to reduce their size. And we're going to an odd number because it makes for better voting outcomes. And in terms of the trustees of the library, they currently are at six. But other groups have found that having an odd number is beneficial for voting. So to keep the Library Trustees consistent with other groups, we are taking them down to an odd number of five.
And I know you mentioned that the Historical Commission had asked for this change. How do the Library Trustees feel about it?
The Library Trustees, we've actually discussed it at Select Board meetings with the former Chair of the Trustees. Last year, they were looking at, someone on the trustees had resigned and we had a conversation with them. Before you suggest someone to be appointed to fulfill that role, because it is an elected board, the charter is considering reducing that number. The Board of Trustees did speak to that. They also gave us information on the Mass Library Association and their recommendations. And they came back requesting that a sixth member be appointed to fulfill that role, which the Board of Selectmen at the time did support. And bringing that information back to the Charter Commission, we heard them, but we still wanted to look at consistency across the boards. So we are still setting forth that five member. So the Library, Mass Library Association suggests groupings of three. I'm not sure why. So our board has always been six. And although it's a suggestion by them, the Charter Review Committee has decided to put forth five.
Thank you for the transparency with that despite some differing opinions from each. I can see how groups of three, but wanting to maintain an odd number kind of clash within guidelines, but.
I mean, we could go up to nine, but then they'd have to find nine people who wanted to be.
Members.
Members.
And that goes back to the historic, which nine was an unwieldy number. They very often could not meet quorum because they didn't have enough members. And they feel that seven is going to be more manageable. Right now, they happen to have seven members. They haven't had nine in a very long time.
All right. Article 33 adjusts the way the Parks and Recreation Board election process is outlined in the charter. I know this one is more of a correction than a change. Can you explain that?
Sure. Through the process and working with Anthony Stavastano, who's the town's.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel. And Brian Cruz, who works with Anthony, they reviewed the language in that article and looked back on the history. And at some point in time, it was recommended and voted on that the Board of Public, the Board of Parks and Recreation would run for their own seat, which is how currently the Select Board runs. However, that was never changed through the Clerk's Office, which is no fault of any one person. It was an aha to us that whatever happens at Town Meeting and ultimately the election, someone from our board has to then go back and make sure these things happen. But right now, the Board of Parks and Rec runs as a group. So even this past election in April, there were two seats available. They were on the same ballot line. So there were names and it said, "Vote for two." If it worked like what it said, it would have been, you know, seat A and somebody could run for that. Seat B, somebody would run for that. This is how the Board has been running successfully for years. And so we're just really cleaning that up so that it maintains how the Board has actually been elected over time.
So let me make sure I understand. Currently, the Parks and Recreation Board is running in a majority-win style. So if you have two people running and there's one seat open, that person who receives the most amount of votes wins a spot on the Board.
Correct.
However, the charter says that it should be, each person runs for a seat based on the seat openings. Even though that's what the charter says, it hasn't been done that way because of a clerical issue years and clerks ago.
Right.
So we're just changing it to be majority winner on the Board.
To reflect how it's actually happening.
Awesome. Okay. Now, the next article, Article 34, actually seeks to change the way the Select Board is running to change from a seat situation to a majority winner.
Right.
Right.
So, yeah. On the Select Board, if there are two seats open, then when you go to the ballot, it says, "Select one," and there might be three people running. And then there'll be another seat and it says, "Select one." That's how it is currently done. That is how it is currently written in the charter. We asked around two other towns how they elect their Select Boards. No other town in the state of Massachusetts elects their Select Board the way we do. So our feeling is to make all position, all election positions, the way we run the elections, to be consistent. We will change, we would like to change the Select Board to the way all other elected positions are run. So it's consistency and it's also consistency with the state. And we don't know why it got written in the charter to be the way it is currently, but we think it's best to be consistent.
Yeah. And it seems like if you're running for a seat, that seat should represent something in the town, like a district or a neighborhood or a village. But in Dartmouth, it doesn't represent that. It's anyone's running for any seat.
Right. We're actually five at-large members. We don't represent any one group. This was actually something that went back and forth on charter. And when bringing it forth to the Select Board, has been batted around as well. And there are certainly very strong feelings by members of the Select Board about this article. Running for your own seat and running on your merits, having someone challenge you because of perhaps stands that you have been taken seems to be something that some members of the Board would like to continue. However, in talking at the Charter Review, it really, again, if we're trying to open ourselves up to pools of candidates to get more people involved, it's difficult for someone maybe to say, "I am going to challenge so-and-so for a seat." Whereas if it's a pool of candidates, they may say, "I'd like to be on the seat. I'd like my voice and my opinions to be heard." And this now gives them an avenue to do that, to stand up, make their points known, and give the townspeople, the voters, an opportunity to really look at candidates and determine who is speaking to their concerns about the town.
Thank you so much for explaining these articles. I'll see you both at Town Meeting. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you for being here and taking the time to talk through these articles. And four years of work, it's finally coming to Town Meeting.
The end is near.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
We made it through the regular Town Meeting and now there are just three articles to go in the special Town Meeting. For these, we have Sean McGinnis back again. Article 1 looks to appropriate $60,000 from the 2024 Community Preservation Act Unrestricted Fund for the Open Space Reserve. Can you explain what this money will be used for?
Yes. So the special Town Meeting funding allocation is for funding items or paying for items that are in the current fiscal year or previous. As you know, the annual Town Meeting is for FY '25, the following fiscal year. So this just allocates funding that CPC had received that they were not anticipating receiving or were not aware of the total, so that they can fulfill their current FY '24 budget.
Articles 2 and 3 deal with previously approved capital projects. Can you explain why they're back at Town Meeting and what they're for?
Sure. And Article 3 covers the appropriate $359,804 from surplus revenue to cover the costs for the Veterans Memorial Stadium construction project. This funding will cover the costs so we don't have to go out to borrow for the funding and this will get them caught up. They had overspent on what they had anticipated, but we did not want to go out to borrowing, so we have the funding to cover that overage. So this is what that article covers.
All right. Easy enough. Thanks for coming in and talking through all these warrant items with me. I'm sure this will help our Town Meeting members a lot.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for having me, Magnolia.
Of course.
All right. See you at Town Meeting.
Thank you to our Town Meeting members and to anyone interested in the warrant for watching this program. The meeting is on Tuesday, June 4 at 9:00 a.m. in the high school auditorium, which is located at 555 Bakersville Road. There's also the Dartmouth Community Media livestream and recording of the meeting to watch at any time. If anyone has questions on how to watch the meeting or if you'd like a copy of the 2024 Spring Town Meeting warrant, please visit the Town Clerk's page on the town website or call the Clerk's Office. Thank you for watching and we hope to see you at the meeting.